Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Biedelman, the prayer this morning? Let me start picking people out.
Morning. Father, we just thank you right now, in Jesus' name, Lord, we thank you for all the benefits that you give to our country and all the doors you open up for us to do the right thing. So we just ask you to continue to give our Commissioners the wisdom and knowledge that they need to run our county and we just believe that this is going to be the best year that we ever had and we just believe success is coming our way to Lorraine County. We continue to pray for unity and working together as a team, Lord, and we trust you for the results, in Jesus' name, amen.
Welcome to the July 9th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has our dog from the kennel this morning.
Go ahead, look up there, everybody see ya. Okay, sit down, go ahead, you sit. Our featured dog this week is a female black lab mix. She was found by Dakota Avenue in Lorraine. She's got a great personality, quiet, but she'll make a great pet. And if she isn't quite for you, we have 29 other dogs at our kennel, stop by.
Today we have a tax abatement enterprise in front of us, which is L&amp;W Cleveland, Inc. and Avon Plant LLC, a wholly owned subsidiary of L&amp;W, calls for 48,000 square foot addition to its Avon facility at a minimum of $12,530,000. It'll create 35 new full-time jobs. Abatement will be for 10 years at 75 percent. And Mayor Johnson from City of Avon, as well as Dawn Dayton and John Coon for L&amp;W are present.
Actually, Madam Clerk, Dawn Dayton called me at 9:25 this morning. She's stuck on the turnpike at a stop, so she may not be able to make it in time for the meeting, but apologizes, hoping to be here. Hi Dawn. It's okay.
We'll tell you what, do we want to move this up so they can get back to their business? Everybody here for you, because Dawn Dayton apparently called Commissioner Kokoski and said she was stuck on the turnpike, probably won't make it?
Yeah.
Do you want to do it now?
Sure, we can.
That way they can get back to work, Teresa.
Nice to see you Pam.
Hi Pam, welcome home.
Yeah, welcome home.
I'm over here.
Good morning, Mayor Johnson. And you.
We're certainly glad to have Pam. I know that most of you know her and it's a huge asset for the City of Avon, but we are here for L&amp;W and like I said, I appreciate the opportunity of letting me come before you and I know I've met Mr. Williams and Mr. Kalo and Mrs. Kokoski. This is the first time I've been introduced to you, but nice to meet you and Mr. Cordez have met with you in the past, but I think that even like the article in the paper in terms of what's happening in Avon, it's a great time to be the mayor of Avon, but you know, this is one of those things that L&amp;W is bringing blue collar jobs. It's one of those things we've done, they've done an expansion before. This is their second expansion. It's something I think sorely needed throughout the county. And again, they've been a huge asset for us and you know, I thank you for the opportunity to take a look at this and help us, you know, along with what we're doing with them and everything else, so.
Wonderful, thank you Mayor. Any questions from the board?
No, no brainer.
Tom?
No.
Oh, okay. We need a motion, make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you again, again, nice meeting you and nice seeing you all.
You too, thank you.
Under Resolutions, number one, investments?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no air payments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you Commissioner, I do have a number of personnel issues to include potential hires at solid waste, within the Commissioners' office, Golden Acres, Job and Family Services. Do also desire to talk with the board on the potential sale and purchase of real estate, ongoing labor negotiations, and pending litigation. All of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and we talk about those issues that I've detailed. Thank you.
Approve waive the reading in the minutes of June 25th?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Posing the new EPA regulations on federal control under Clean Water Act, this would allow EPA and corporate engineers expand definition of navigable water with more restrictions and undue costs onto political entities.
So moved.
Second? Discussion.
Yeah, Jim, do we want to discuss this, or is Dawn here?
Well, I don't know if we really need to discuss it, it's just that, under the, let me say it easily, the EPA continues to over-regulate what's considered navigable waterways and this is just a tightening of those regulations which is going to make it more challenging. I know Bob's here from the Engineers' Office, I don't know if he wants way in it, but it's always difficult when you have to involve the EPA within the scope of work projects. So tightening that definition is not in the best interest of this community.
Well, it mentioned in the letter that we were sending them, the burden on the farmers and just all types of businesses and things of that nature.
Well, right now, they look at any place that water goes that has like what they call a high watermark, and depending on how you define that, it could get very challenging. So EPA does a fine job, I think that they should restrict themselves to the current regulations which are taxing as it is.
Right.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve payment to victims of domestic violence, Lorraine County Safe Harbor, Inc., DBA Genesis House, for the amount of $26,205.97, as collected by Lorraine County for the period of January 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2014, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 2303.201 and 3113.34 through 39.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Children and Family, approve the contract, Lorraine County Developmental Disabilities, in the amount of $60,756.67 for the fiscal year 15 Help Me Grow Program for Part C evaluations, effective retroactive to July 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2014.
So moved.
Second?
On a different note, Mr. Cordez, have we looked at development with disabilities for the dog kennel yet? Have we talked to Amber Fisher about that?
Actually, we've made some calls back and forth, we really weren't able to align the needs there. So in order to get the work done, we had to move in a different direction. We're going to still continue to try to create opportunity there, but there were some safety concerns with regard to not always knowing the temperament of the animals that may be in contact with. So we didn't really come to any positive outcome.
Are we down employees, or are we needing some kennel keepers?
I think that, I think we hired one a couple of weeks ago, I think we're at full staffing on the kennel keepers, but that doesn't mean that we still can't add some additional work with the DD, if we can come to a satisfactory arrangement. The cost isn't huge there and it does create opportunity for a certain amount of independence. So the issue's not, it's not that, it just hasn't really reached an outcome that we wanted to, and I say that's right now, because things change.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, approve an enter in various lease agreements effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, for the space at 4245 North Ridge Road, Illyria, with cost based on square footage as determined by MAXIMUS. One, Job and Family Services for 49,950 square feet, for the total amount of $245,754, with the monthly payment of $20,479.50, and CSCE at $16,375 square feet, for the total annual amount of $81,875, with the monthly payment of $6,822.92.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Workforce, approve an enter in lease agreement with WGA for the 19,890 square feet of finished office space at 42495 North Ridge Road, Illyria, effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. Total rent is $81,554.66, payable monthly at $6,796.22.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve an enter in LPA, agreeing with ODOT, to address noted safety concerns at the intersection of Baumhart Road, County Road 51, and Middle Ridge Road, Township Road 32. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of Board with Prosecutor's Approval License form.
So moved.
Second? Discussion.
I have a question, Bob, probably you on this, does this mean they're going to do lights at that intersection for safety concerns, or just improvements to the road?
No, there's a sight.
I was looking through the paperwork, I didn't see anything, and I travel that way a lot, so I was wondering what the safety improvements are going to be.
Now, if there's, actually at the intersection of Middle Ridge and Baumhart, there's a sight distance problem, if you're going, get my bearing straight here, going westbound on Middle Ridge, you know, when you look to your left, there's a sight distance problem that we want to correct. And also, just to the south of the intersection, that horizontal curve, we want to correct that, there actually was a fatality there last summer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve an enter in a real estate agreement with ODOT, which stipulates responsibility of each agency in the acquisition of the right of way of safe routes to school project Sheffield Township. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of Board with Prosecutor's Approval License form.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
the intersection of Middle Ridge Road, County Road fifty-one, and Noblen Road, Township thirty-nine. Authorize engineer to execute in behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Same issue, Bob? We're just getting concerned. So since that Vermillion Road discussion we've had, people are asking what's going on when we start talking about changing the roads.
Yeah, this one, again, right now, there's a skew with Oberlin Road going to the north. We want to correct that. It has come up already, but I know there was some, some folks have asked about a signal going there. We've already done a signal warrant analysis. A signal does not warrant there, so the project would involve more, bringing Oberlin Road more into a more conventional T-intersection to get rid of that skew.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Award contract to Dennis Concrete Wellington, the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars for the pile, South Amherst Road Bridge, Sierra Zero fourteen replacement. Four bids were received on June twenty-fourth, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed on September first and complete on her before November seventh, with no substitutions, but will use Subconstruct Protection Services, Inc., for the traffic control. MPS Construction Fabrics for the waterproofing. Engineer's estimate was three-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. Seventy-four percent of the funding is provided through the grant from OPWC, and the balance will be split between the city of Oberlin and, and the engineer to be paid for the MVGT engineer project bridge. Authorize administrator to notify the auditor to release retainage at completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Advertise bids for resurfacing of Butternut Ridge Road, County Road twelve, from State Route three-oh-one to Grafton Road, notice being the chronic on July eleventh and eighteenth, and open at two P.M. on August fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Health Department, award contract to Precision Paving, Inc., Mylan, in the amount of seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents, for the parking lot improvement project. Four bids were received on June twenty-seventh, this being the most responsive complying with the specifications, and will be paid from the construction account. Issue notice to proceed on her before July twenty-eighth and complete on her before August twenty-ninth. Authorize administrator to notify auditor to release retainage at completion of project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Is this general fund money under the Health Department, Mr. Cortez?
There's a, this is a bifurcated process. Commissioner, I'm pleased to say that the Health Department is working with us as a partner to repair these parking lots, and that honestly, they're really not under a huge obligation to do so. But given the stress on the general fund, they, they agreed to pay half of the cost of resurfacing those lots that are in desperate need of, of upkeep.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Mental Health, Amendment Resolution fourteen-four-ten, adopted June eighteen, two thousand fourteen, declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for providing essential mental health services for facilities for children, adults, and seniors, adults, a one-point-two mil levy. The amendment is to reflect this levy is for ten years, not five years.
So moved.
Second.
Did you guys want to hear from Charlie or anybody?
I don't think so. He just, he just paperwork.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm seeing, Charlie, did you want to come up?
He is here on vacation.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all doing?
Introduce yourself, Mr. Kowski.
I am Charlie Neff, Director of the Mental Health Board of Lorraine County, and I appreciate your consideration of this levy being placed before the voters for ten years. We talked individually and about the elimination of the rollback provision, if a levy were ever to be replaced. So in our mind, in, in talking with Jerry Ennis about this, he indicated as long as the purpose of the levy remained the same, we could go up to ten years. And so this would save us the cost of an election over a ten-year period. So that allows more money to go into services. So that's the reason that my board decided to try to go for a ten-year renewal.
Wonderful. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Thank you.
Go back on vacation now.
Under the sheriff, extend the current term of the commensary service agreement with Airmark, effective retroactive to May fourth, two thousand fourteen through September first, two thousand fourteen, when their new contract will be effective.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
I have no additional comments this morning, except to those issues that I identified for executive session. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I have one matter of pending litigation, one matter of imminent litigation that I would like to discuss with you in executive session.
Commissioners report.
Just welcome back, everybody. It was a nice, long holiday weekend, and enjoyed myself. Went over to Kelly's Island for a couple nights, and beautiful, beautiful weather, the best Fourth of July weather I recall in a long time. So really don't have a report, just glad to be back.
Wonderful. Yeah, just been working on the WAC issues. We have our governing board meeting this Friday. I'd like to thank Janice for helping with all my paperwork this morning because I couldn't quite keep up with it. So I'm glad Jim grabbed her. But yeah, no report, and let's kick off the second half of the year.
Commissioner, no, wait, Commissioner, I do have one issue I want to go back on.
Oh, go ahead.
The, you know, I, I didn't see it in my folder, and then I just thought about it, and then it was there. Yesterday late, I got some documentation from the bond, Council on Bond Underwriters, with regard to reissuing debt on the Visitors Bureau building. I, I know some of you were, Commissioner, you were on the board for a while, that the building has suffered substantial problems since its construction and they're in litigation. Apparently, the building needs around three-hundred thousand dollars, maybe more, of work. Apparently, the, the seals have failed on, on the building, and there's mold and rot. And I don't know who did what, who didn't do what, nor do I really actually care. We weren't the construction people in charge of that project, but we did finance that building through the Port Authority with a non-tax revenue guarantee from the county, since we collect the hotel motel bed tax. And then we dispersed those proceeds according to the Ohio Revised Code. And also, the Board of Commissioners identifies the entity that they classify as the Visitors Bureau. That is your choice. It doesn't necessarily have to be the entity that is right now. However, it's been that entity for quite some time. Therefore, in order for them to refinance the debt on their building and take out some cash to do the repairs until they wait for their litigation to be finished, you need to once again guarantee payment of that debt. You're not putting the general fund at, at risk because you do collect the motel motel bed tax, and our arrangement is that we, we take the proceeds and we pay the debt service on that. So I have a resolution here that I'd like to pass down. It simply states in legal terms what I've just explained here. I don't know any other way of helping the Visitors Bureau. They've been in to see several of you over the last year, year and a half, with regard to the building. The time is ripe. I was looking at a refinance on this anyway because the rates are lower and they're paying a substantially higher rate. The savings just wasn't there to tease out enough money to pay for the repair, even on a refi, so we're extending it back out to the twenty years and taking cash out so that they can fix the building. Because it's not going to get any better anytime soon, and this litigation could drag on for several years, and the building would just deteriorate even worse.
One of the things, when the Clerk's office was there, the title office, there's issues with airflow into the smaller office that's a tent, and that's inside the building. They were looking at going through and redoing the HVAC, which was around fifty thousand dollars to do it, in order to try to get the airflow, because there was a, a certain smell in that building. There was no issues with the air quality. It did pass the air quality test, but just multiple issues in there. I know I worked with Ron Nabokowski to try to keep them in there, but the amount of money that they were going to invest in at that time, they didn't have, so.
Again, there's, I don't see any other way of us, us assisting them, other than to guarantee, again, the, the financing on, on the building, and hopefully this money will be used to make the repairs. Now, one of the stipulations I did put into the requirements is that, A, they, they're going to have to add an additional piece of property that they procured after the original financing for the parking lot adjacent to the building, and B, that if they do receive some award in either a settlement or in litigation, something prior to the litigation or in litigation, that's, that has to be escrow for paydown of some of the debt.
The debt, yeah.
So that there's not a windfall out of this situation, and we've just extended out a large amount of debt. And, and they have agreed, I believe, to all of those stipulations. So I'm asking for your consideration, once again, to allow us to work with the Visitors Bureau through the Port Authority.
Do you need to read that, Teresa? Can we just approve please, then, Jim?
You can just approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Hopefully, we'll get a, a small bump in revenue with the Republican National Convention. They, I guess, use some of our hotels motels around Lorraine County to...
Well, we, we sent some letters of support for that. We, I wish I could tell you, we were bigger players in helping them get it here, but we did send letters. I believe that all of our hotels along, at least along the corridor, Route Two will probably be full.
Right.
I was on the phone with Barb from the Visitors Bureau after the news came out. You know, I think they're going to work on it, of course, but maybe having them work with some of our economic development team too, just to get ready for next year. I know it's two thousand sixteen, but start working on it a year ahead of time. Especially the eastern part of the county, we got a lot of great restaurants there.
Right.
And they're looking at going a fifty-mile radius, so hopefully it'll bring some economic development here.
Let's hope so.
Now, we just got to get the Democrats to come along, too.
Yeah, hopefully they will.
So.
All right.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
What are you laughing at? Money is money. It doesn't say D R R.
I agree with you. I, you know...
The Green Party. It's all the Green Party.
The, the spillover's going to be very nice. It will spill over, and you're, you're right. We will catch some of those eateries on the east side of, of the county. So it's, I'm looking forward to this. It's going to be, it's going to be a nice event for the whole region.
Yeah. Well, busy weekend, but first, I want to just congratulate the, the boys that played on my baseball team, the Muck Dogs, went into the playoffs. A little heartbreaking. We won the game, but we lost the game. We won the game on a grand slam, but there was a bad call, and...
Uh-oh, going after the bombs.
You know, I was a, I was a college umpire. And I waited. Actually, I wanted to read the rules before I protested, and I forgot. The rule is, in order to do a protest, you have to make the protest right there. So we, I was correct.
You dropped the ball, Tom?
I dropped the ball on that one. So I'll be taking the kids swimming at the Ambers Pole to make it up to them. So hopefully they'll satisfy them, but it was a great, great year. You know, coaching, if you haven't coached before, it's one of the best things to do, is see kids that come in, first year, never played the game, could barely swing a bat, to having them make the All-Star team. Just wonderful. And I was blessed because I had great parents. And my advice to anyone who's going to coach, pick the parents. Find the good parents and pick their kid because they're going to help you out. And I end up having eight, eight parents out on the field, helping me coach, go through practices and everything, so.
You'll find, you'll make lifelong friends just through coaching.
Yep, yeah. So baseball's done. I got football that starts soon for my son, and then soccer, of course, so another full year of sports coming through. So I'm looking forward to that. I was very pleased on it. Parades, Fourth of July parades, Rochester, great, great festival down there, Wellington, just wonderful. But a couple of questions that come up. A lot of people don't know what a commissioner does, and, you know, budgeted authorities. So Jim, if you can play along, because I know the answers, but a couple of things that came up where people were kind of questioning it, and they actually thought that Board of Commissioners could authorize guns to be in bars. Now, you...
Is this the Jeopardy music going to go off this time soon?
And Al, if you listen to backup music?
Yeah.
No, you, you can't authorize, you cannot authorize.
We can't authorize that. And then another one was that we go through, and we were the ones that redid the districts for the congressional districts, and that that's another one. Jim?
No, we, we, we do not have anything to do with the, the districting of congressional districts.
Yeah, it, it's just, you know, the only reason I'm bringing it up is people don't know what's going on, and, you know, you try to educate them so they understand what the commissioner's role is. And, you know, when people don't understand it, I think the best way is to try to explain it to them, so they know what local government is and how it functions.
A little bit of knowledge goes a long way.
It does, so.
A little bit of knowledge can be dangerous also.
In the wrong hands, Commissioner.
But that's the end of my report.
Madam Clerk?
Board of Correspondents?
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment.
Anyone wishing to address the board for the record? You guys state your name and your address, and then go ahead and tell us what the issue is.
That's debatable. My name is Mike Pishoni. My address is one-four-eight-seven-one, State Route three-oh-one, LaGrange Township. I'm a resident there for the last four and a half years. I'm a past resident of Ambers for twenty-two years, and I grew up in Lorraine. My comment here is, other than the politics that you were just talking about, that we were naive, some people were naive, it's, it's a blessing to have the Republican National Convention choose Cleveland since nineteen thirty-six. It's a respect for the people, and it's a respect for the city and, and all the surrounding communities, whether it's polit, whether it's a politician's delight or another politician's aggravation, but it's still respect to the people. Because we, as the people, sitting here in this room, as normal citizens, are the ones that are affected by those backdoor politics. But that's just a comment from, from me, because it was a blessing to have you guys make a comment to it. But I'm, I'm here because of the, the ditch that I have that goes through my, my property. I have both sides of it, near six hundred feet of it I maintain, and it, it comes from east to west, and it goes back down north to south into another Parsons Road, and then it crosses back over on three-oh-one, northeast and west.
Let me hold you. It's King's Ditch. We've got engineering people here, so I'm letting them know what we're talking, King's Ditch.
But the reason I'm, I'm here is because I maintain it on both sides, and the, when it gets to the back of my property, whoever owns that property back there is not maintaining it, and the cattails have formed a, a barrier to the point where, when it, when we've had this past flood that we've had these last three times, it's, it's gone. I mean, the couple of people have their gardens, or whatever they want to call them, they, they have lost near half of them, and I'm not here for that. I'm here to the fact that it comes it, and it's, I have a, my main, my, I have a property with a, with a pond and everything that overflows, and it's, this past one is, has overflowed to the point where, when the ditch got so high, it was only within, I'd say, within fifteen to eighteen inches of the highway itself. It came up to the highway itself, and it, it, it came cross, crossed, and the thing of it is, is it came from ten feet wide, and it, it backed up, and it went right down to about a foot and a half, and it's going to back up. And my concern, and is the fact that the matter is, it's a highway. You have trucks there. You have normal people drive down there, but the thing of it is, if it, if it goes onto that highway, I do not want to see an accident there, because it's, it's, it's a, it's a ditch, and you have, you have both guardrails on both sides, but in the middle of the night, when people are traveling, well, that the last time this happened, it was, it did happen in the middle of the night. And the, some, I don't know who has to talk to the people, because I don't know who owns that property, because I've only been there four years. But I'm not asking for help to maintain it, because we, I, I see where we maintain a certain amount of property. I don't know if it's targeted, or if it's a blessing to have it targeted, but the thing of it is, is it, we need help in that area for those people that are, that, that, that are being overflooded. I, I have not had a flood in my basement, but other people have. But I'm here because of the concern of how high that water goes, the bottom line.
Jim?
And I apologize for taking any time from you.
No, you're fine.
No, it's, it's perfect. A couple of things. First of all, nobody's really targeted. Projects are brought forward for ditch cleaning through the Stormwater District, through the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and the Township Trustees.
Or petition.
Well, we, some of those are grants. They haven't been petitioned, but we're, we're going back to the petition process. With regard to neighbors that don't...
Point of information. I did bring this up at the Township Meeting.
LaGrange Township?
Yes, sir. And I was directed to come bring it here.
That's unfortunate.
Well, it's, it's unfortunate, but, you know, we, just like I had said about politicians, backdoor politics, we do not want to play a door swinging event here. We just want to make sure that nobody gets harmed on the highway if something happens again. And I would like to have, I would like, as a citizen, to at least have it looked at.
Right. They, they, they actually could have taken this up, and they could have contacted us, and we would have worked with them. So that would have been easier than making you come all the way down.
It's always nice seeing you, though, Mike.
Nothing is, nothing is easy.
But, but here, here, here's the thing with regard to adjacent property owners, it's always been frustrating. We have very limited authority to go in there and compel them to perform maintenance on those ditches. Most times, a property owner that's frustrated by the conduct of their neighbors will start a petition process for the ditch cleaning, and then have the ditch put on routine maintenance as part of that cleaning. You don't seem to want to do that, and you're a good property owner, and it seems to be a good neighbor, because you are cleaning your portion of the ditch.
I even maintain the highway part where the, where the weeds and the grass are overgrowing, so the county people, and or the state people don't even have to come on there. With my weed eater, I'm the one that doesn't, and I don't charge them.
Well, it's the state. You should go ahead and charge them.
Yeah.
As long as it's a state route. The, the, but I would certainly like to get your address and come out, have my folks take a look at it with you, and see, we can, have some conversation with that. And, and also, maybe talk to LaGrange. I don't think LaGrange has applied for a grant to do any kind of ditch cleaning. So next round is coming up in the next few months, and maybe this could be ripe for an opportunity for collaboration.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your thoughts on that. I appreciate your concern and, and the fact that you will, you're willing to do that, and...
I didn't say we're going to do anything. I just said we're going to come out.
I didn't say we're willing to look into that. I didn't say you were going to do it, willing to look into it.
So...
Words of, words, words can be construed or misconstrued.
You have this gentleman's contact information?
No.
We saw you hit your phone number.
Fourteen-eight-seven-one, State Route...
One-four-eight-seven-one, State Route three-oh-one. I'm on the east side of the road.
Would you leave your phone number with the clerk, too?
Pardon?